Process is the title of the work alone is a hundred dollars and that they pay three to four dollars a year in taxes for that lot.
So it doesn't matter if they-
On the other hand, you sold that lot and that lot made you money there, didn't it?
No.
No, we lost money.
Because I heard about a couple of lots that still up there pretty high.
Yeah, the ones around the lake are doing really well. These are the ones that are off.
Yeah, I know where you're talking about.
So we sell one and makes us ten thousand, but we sell a hundred and we lose twenty thousand. Oh, we're negative ten thousand.
Yeah.
That's the truth.
There's waves around.
No, it's state law. Again, it's state law. We can't force them to pay taxes. You don't have to pay your taxes for three years and we can't do nothing about it.
So Clifton, you did say taxes always go up, right? Granted, they, you know, but I, no, that's how it feels though, right? That's how it truly feels to us.
The market's on it.
Absolutely. I asked the question though, when is the last time Bourbon County has been allowed to have economic growth that has impacted us? I mean, it seems to me like here, because I know a hundred years ago, this was boom town and then decisions were made and it was, you know, like you're looking at it and there's good reasons. We've kept our history. We've kept the things we're proud of and now those industries that we've leveraged everything on and staying small, they're not doing so well and they're not valued by the rest of the world and the economy. And so we're in that decision point, right? Now, I'm not saying we throw the baby out with the bathwater. I think we need to keep, we ought to keep those two realities and that's the impossible job you guys have. So I appreciate you guys doing it. I don't know if you realize that, when you said yes.
Well, I mean, it's off the revenue neutral rate, but I mean, we've from day one, and then when Jim came, I mean, I can, Anne can probably remember me saying, I would think that if you stay stagnant, guess what happens?
Absolutely.
And we are, I would think, the fact of the matter is, is what we do during the day, I mean, I spend twenty to thirty hours a week on county business.
For sure.
You just don't see it.
Right. Yeah, right. I mean-
I mean, we're extremely proactive.
Absolutely.
You just don't see it.
Absolutely.
But we're working on bigger deals, sorry Anne, but let me finish. We're, I mean, the things we are working on, they don't happen in a month.
No, absolutely.
They don't happen in two months. We're working on multi-year, multi-year deals. And so, you know, everybody, we're in an instant gratification society.
Absolutely.
And it's, and I can tell you right now, number one, government is slower than a turtle.
Absolutely.
And then the deals that we are working on don't, I mean, they are, they're about as slow as government.
So can I, so you said last week or the week before, I'm trying to, you said when people have talked, the prevailing issue, because I think it was, we were talking about zoning and all that, right? And about economic growth and all this. And you said the prevailing issue that continues to come up about Bourbon County was not zoning or X, Y, or Z, it was negativity. You remember saying that? It was negativity, inherent negativity of the community, inherent negativity of the market here, inherent negativity of social media, whatever it is, right? And I, I mean, I've, I experienced that daily, you know, as a, as a city or a county employee.
Sure.
Absolutely. It doesn't have to be that way, but I just, I, I fear, coming about revenue neutral, trying to bring you back on point, is that negativity right now is clashing with the idea of we're trying to have economic development. You're not going to satisfy everybody. I just fear that if we cave to the negativity in the temporary, you're going to torpedo the growth in the future. And that's the question I get asked. But you got to ask, is the increase today, this year, or for the next few years or whatever, and the things we're asking for as a, as a county, is it worth it to sustain that growth, you know, and suffer in our taxes today or whatever? I can't answer that for everyone. I just hope we can ask that question of ourselves instead of getting upset and saying, well, so and so's not doing this or that.
It's a fair question. Is everybody satisfied with what's happening now?
Right, right.
And if, if everybody is, we need X amount of dollars to continue that process.
Right.
If everybody's not, then we can-
Right. And then that's where-
We can cut some of that stuff out.
And that's where I hear you saying, you're like, well, if we're going to cut, we might as well cut it all, you know? And that's a perspective and that's, I mean, that's really, if you want to be fair, if we're really hurting, then that's, and if that's what people need, then that's what people, then that's what they like you to do. And that stinks because I fear, again, I'm biased because of my position, and I don't want to, don't want to see that, that Bourbon County, but if that's where you got to go, I, I fear, I fear where that would take us. So I think if we stay the course, we, we can get there. So I just appreciate you guys. I've taken up so much time.
Hey Chase?
Yeah.
Just before you run off, I mean, another perspective.
Yeah.
We're, basically it's, there's so much caught up in the idea that the county, it's the county's job, it's the local government's job to increase economic development, to make us prosperous. Well, I kind of fundamentally disagree with that. It's, I believe it's the county's, the county government's job to enforce laws, keep people safe. And I know it takes money to do that, but ultimately, it's the people. We, we are free citizens and we have the freedom to bring businesses in, make smarter business decisions, work hard, wake up early in the morning, go to work. And if you can do that without being taxed overly, and if you can do that without rules and regulations that are hindering you, then maybe you can be more prosperous. And we're free to be prosperous and we're free to fail too.
Absolutely.
That's what freedom is. And it's all about the individual, what we do. It's not riding on the government. It's not, not even the local government. It's riding on us as individuals and as, you know, American citizens.
That's good.
So.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the tension.
But everything you said, you know, very-
Well, we do, as a county, we do have a hospital, right? Like, that is something that we have that will directly, you know what I mean? So we did get involved in that wrong way or different. We have it and we're going to make the most of it. I believe in that. It stinks right now because nothing's been, you know, has been finalized, but we'll get there. So for example, like, that counteracts that argument of complete free market, but so we're, that's where local government, I think, oversteps down. So I just, I ask that question for us, is it worth it? Can we survive this year or two?
Good question.
For what we're doing, to do it, and stave off that negativity to see these things come to fruition. And I don't want to take up any more of your guys' time. I would thank you guys.
As a commissioner, I would love to get back to just worrying about gravel roads.
Absolutely, right? But they do a great job. I just want to get, seriously, they're super valuable. I want to say that to everybody. Please do not, do not-
I think I did cut off Anne and I apologize.
Thanks, Chase.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'd like to say that we're kind of like the gentleman said, if I was a farmer, we can't raise any more money either. We don't have water rates, we don't have sewer rates, so what we have to deal with is what we, all we have. Yes, next.
Mary Pemberton. I would like to say, I think we all understand the challenges staying revenue neutral. It's very difficult when the price of everything that you buy goes up and you're trying to not spend any more money. That said, I also agree with the statement you make, Clifton, that what you need to be concerned with is the expenses, how much is being paid. And one thing I noticed when just about every department head came up here and presented their budget, time after time, I heard the statement that, "We didn't budget for raises. We only gave the three percent." Nobody here asked or made the, the response, "Well, a three percent raise is a raise." So it's that government mindset that we didn't really increase this. And if they could give three percent raises and still not increase the budget, they obviously have room padding, so to speak, in their budget to begin with. The other thing I wanted to address was the statement that we can only control road and bridge and the appraiser's office. You guys have the budgeting authority. You set the budgets for all the departments. And I know you do, you are required by law to give them enough money to effectively operate their department. But what that means is if you know, for example, since this was one of the big issues here in the last few months, if the sheriff has the opportunity to cut fifty thousand dollars worth of fuel costs simply by buying in bulk, take fifty thousand out of their budget and say, "Okay, we're not saying you have to buy it. We're just not going to fund you not to."
So-
And if they go over their budget, yes, I know, that does have some repercussions on you, but it might be the only way that people in the county will wake up and realize what's going on and the hostage holding that's occurring within some of the departments in their budgets and, you know, could lead to a recall or maybe an election of somebody different next time, instead of the way it works now, when people go to the poll and they're very uninformed, most of them, they're just checking off a name that they know. If they don't know any of the names, they look and see who it says incumbent and they check that. People need to become aware and if it takes something like that happening, you know, I mean, the previous commission allowed the number of irregularities in the audit that put jeopardy on the county in the future. This is just another one of them. And it might take something big like that to fix things.
I have a question. Go ahead Nelson, if you want.
Well, I think, maybe somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but the way it was explained to me is, so if, not to pick on the sheriff's office, this is just the example because it's an elected official, but if, if the elected official asks for something, it's basically, we have to give it, no, listen, let me finish.
Okay, I'm listening.
Okay. We give it by default and then if we think it's unreasonable, we have to go to a hearing later. And then it may or may not, we may or may not win, but it's, it's not like, oh, we don't think that's reasonable, you can't have it, whatever they ask for.
Who do you go to a hearing before?
The state, I think, but-
They have to sue.
Okay.
They have to sue.
Yeah. And if you can say, well, we have proof that he can save fifty thousand by buying fuel in bulk, our other departments are getting, buying their fuel for less.
But they are, I mean, and, and you, you hit on it, but they're elected officials. He's an elected official.
Yes.
So he answers to the people. He doesn't answer to us.
What I'm saying is, you have the budgeting authority. You determine what is a reasonable budget for him to be able to operate his department. It then is up to him to determine where he spends all that money. So if it's more important to him that he buy his fuel from the gas station instead of buying it in bulk and getting a discount, then he also has to decide where is, what's he going to cut? Is he going to not upgrade the vests?
Definitely one perspective.
You know, as often, or there's, there's always a trade-off when you're talking about where are you going to spend your money.
And you could also say, and I'm not advocating for the sheriff's office, like everyone said I would, but I'm, I'm just saying-
But I'm just using that as an example because everybody here is familiar with what was going on as far as the fuel.
But another perspective would be, you know, he's duly elected and he can, he has the authority to make those decisions for the sheriff's, or for the sheriff's office. And I wouldn't want to have the image of trying to strong-arm any department. If the, if the people don't think he's operating like he should, then somebody else can get elected. But I don't think that it's the commission's job to kind of micromanage every little thing and try, well, if you don't do it the way we think you should.
Well, I'm just saying, you need to ask questions, not just rubber stamp.
And the people should know by now that we're not responsible for it.
Does everyone understand the law, what happens if an elected official department goes, goes over budget? What, what we can, can and cannot do?
I would bet that hardly anybody understands that. They don't understand any of it. That's kind of the point is, and I'm not advocating for that to happen. I'm saying that at some point, you can't just continually accept whatever anybody wants to turn into you without question.
That's right.
That's it.
I think we do ask a lot of questions, but it comes a point, if we don't fund them, they continue to go over budget, there's going to come to a point where there's no money to cover that budget, then I think it's going to have to go to court somewhere. So.
It's called an endogenous act.
Yeah. Is that correct, Susan?
Yes.
Okay.
Jackie, I think had something else.
I just want to make a really quick statement. So I'm not just looking at this year. I am looking at the increase we paid from twenty to twenty-one was substantial with the capital taxes. So was it, what, but is it, you have to look at where the, which taxing entity it is.
Yeah, and I can help with that.
I'd say we actually lowered our mill, two, two mills that year, so.
Yeah. So you can't look at it as a whole. It's, it's, it's really which taxing entity it is.
I'm just looking at dollars.
Right, exactly. You don't, you don't care. You just know that your tax is going to happen.
Well, I, I want to care and learn, but yeah, I just wanted to make that clear. But I'm just not, it's not just this.
Yeah, yeah. And that could have something to do with the market rate or the market going up and down. Your assess valuation may have gone way up. I don't know. I'd have to look at yours.
Where you live.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any more on this revenue neutral hearing, but we need to add one to the agenda for the fire district number three, because theirs is also tonight. You know, it's supposed to be at six, so we're an hour and a half later. So if there's no more on this one, we need to open another one.
Any other questions, comments on this hearing?
Revenue neutral is a very deceiving term. It's almost like puppy dogs and kitty cats. It sounds like it's a good thing, but it may not be.
May not be.
Right.
Yep.
Any other comments from the county's perspective?
Any other comments before I close the hearing? Air motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the revenue neutral rate hearing for the county.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Hearing's closed.
I need you to amend the agenda.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to add fire district three. Is that right?
Yes.
Notice of hearing to exceed revenue neutral rate and budget hearing for fire, are we doing both?
Next.
The governing body of fire district three of Bourbon County.
Yeah. So we'll come back to it.
Two resolutions here.
Apparently.
Yes, we'll have two resolutions. So.
You made a motion, did you second?
I did.
And then we'll need a motion to open the hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. I make a motion to open the hearing for fire district number three. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone here to represent fire district?
I think she went to the restroom.
Okay.
Blue's here.
I'm here.
Blue's here. You have the floor.
I have the floor. We have, we have requested a small budget increase that is going to raise our property taxes four dollars per hundred thousand dollar home. We have, we do not, I'm from fire district three. We have no intention of raising property taxes ever. Our department understands and we don't want our taxes raised either. This did end up exceeding R and R. If it has to, okay. If not, we're going to figure out how to load up like it to, to get us.
Where is fire district three?
Bourbon County Fire District three covers approximately five hundred and eighty square miles of Bourbon County. We are Uzam, Bronson, Hyattville, Devon, Mapleton, Fulton, and Ranford. Yes.
The entire, the entire county except for Fort Scott.
Right.
And Garland.
Scott-Holmshire Fire Department and Garland Fire Department are two separate from us. We cover the rest of the county with those seven stations. We currently have about twenty-five volunteers.
Which is not enough.
Which is not enough, no. If I can plug an R and R hearing, if I can plug, we need volunteers, we need volunteers. We absolutely try to do our best with tax dollars to provide gear and equipment, maintain that equipment and stations the way that we have to. But this year, for some reason, it did exceed. So we hope that, I know if it doesn't, is our hope. This is all kind of new to us. I've learned more about it than I have at any of it. It's like, oh my gosh, are you kidding me? Yeah, so.
I would, as a citizen, I'm going to say something. Not as a commissioner, just want to make that clear. I used to be a volunteer for the fire department, but I also remember, and this was twenty, twenty-five years ago, I also remember unfortunately, somebody at that station stating, "Well, we have to spend this money. We won't get it next year." I don't know if that mindset is still there.
I don't think so.
If it is, I would ask that you change that mindset. But that was absolutely said and I thought, I mean, at the time, I, you know.
Right.
Was it twenty years old? I didn't know any better.
Unfortunately, with, with the cost of gear and equipment, the SCBA that we have to have, the, all of the safety gear that we have to provide for the volunteers, new trucks.
Fuel's when it-
Fuel is, fuel is eating us alive this year.
I, I guess so. My, my point with that is just that I hope that you would stress that that's not the case.
We actually, at the end of the year, we, how our department tries to figure out this budget, we, we figure out what we think we're going to need for the year to do our operations. We are very, 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 very conservative until about October. Once we have figured out that we have blown our fuel budget or stayed in our fuel budget, our gear, whatever, we find out that we have that money there, then we try to plan for what we need for the next year and the next year as far as upgrading equipment. SCBA are ten thousand dollars for an air pack for, for a firefighter on the back. Those bottles are an extra thousand.
That's, that's to breathe so they can come into your house to save your life.
Right.
Very necessary.
We try to budget that in, but we don't spend that money until we know that our trucks are still maintained, our stations are maintained, all of our people have all the gear and everything that they need. So then, spending that money so that we don't lose it, well, we do start spending down that extra cash on the equipment and the gear that we need for replacement.
What is your budget?
If we have people, then we have to have more equipment.
If we have, if we've got more volunteers, hallelujah, we need more. Yeah.
And you guys are also first responders and EMTs. It's not just fire.
Yes, yes. This is not just fire. This is any emergency you have in that five hundred square miles.
I, I literally watched a guy perform CPR on a kid when I was a volunteer. So.
That's great.
And right now, we are increasing our EMTs. We have, we're in the process of a class right now, about seven EMTs of our volunteers. This is their time.
They will be any ambulance to you, I promise.
Yes, they will. Their budget, their proposed budget is three hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Last year, their budget was three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty. So there's not much of an increase.
Will they have a budget hearing on the twentieth as well?
Their budget hearing is, is tonight. It's, it's R and R and budget. Yep.
So they're asking for, basically, in my opinion, what is important is, they were three twenty-eight last year. They're asking for three, what did she say?
Three thirty-three.
Three thirty-three this year, so a five thousand dollar increase in their budget.
To save lives.
Paper gas.
Yes.
That's not even going to cover it.
Yeah.
The unfortunate part is, they don't know how many fires they're going to get. They don't know how many grass fires they're going to get. They don't-
Correct.
Can I open up for comments now? Any comments from the audience, please, regarding the real fire district three budget? I hear motion, close the hearing.
I make a motion to, did Clint want to say something?
I don't know. He wasn't here.
You wanted to?
No.
They're talking about several fire looks towards our districts are reading.
I make a motion to close the fire district three hearing.
Second?
Second.
In budget.
In budget hearing.
Got a motion and got a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 I need a break.
Five minute break.
Okay. Is that you'll need paperwork signed?
Nelson, are you having fun?
Yeah.
Go on.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like to be.
I never have any.
Yeah, exactly.
That's cheap.
Well, I, I had to give your constitution away to somebody else.
I got more for you.
He's not going to talk and said, "Get in here."
Fourteen, fifteen, that's September, Constitution Day. Every year I get a hundred.
I love you. I'm not a bad chief. I haven't sat next to him in my patrol car and I was. I'll give you all you need. I don't believe I have another check. I just got them in mail. Have them available for you on the fourth.
I looked at them on this very much.
Yeah.
I'll get them. I'll get them. Each one of them, yeah. Yeah, they sent me a whole box. They came over.
You missed the district three presentation. I was hoping you'd be there because they were the ones that dressed you out of your car. People are saying you have your car.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were making it in the right direction. Yes. I guess I'll do.
Okay.
Hospital.
Well, we have the ER, but there are so many other.
Yeah. Workers.
What did he say about how many people showed up at the river? You know why? Don't tell me you're not going to feed them just because you can't afford it. I'll buy my own ticket. I don't eat free food from the county or the city, but don't tell me I can't, I have to sit there and watch you pay. I'm going to read that whole thing to you. I'm going to read that whole thing to you. Primarily, this is how it's returning.
It's cheap.
Nothing. Here's, here's the deal. YouTube is on your line. Maybe it's time, right? Don't speak it to them. Or somebody like you, or the monster, or the audience, people can hear it. They get very frustrated about it. That's what's keeping you away. How do I know when to come? Nine o'clock or six o'clock? There's people.
It's like that every time.
I just got it over here today. It says six.
That is.
It says six down here.
That is hard here. I agree.
It's confusing.
And that's totally.
All I can do is make stitches.
Yeah, good luck. I have an office there. One right over here. Yeah.
So much for you. We have to.
It's a dear question.
Why go to the pipe?
Went that way once, not going to do it again.
I'm lucky when you always say this. Because they started. I don't know. They need those. I'll try and digest it one more time.
Okay.
I'll try and digest it. 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 I'll try and digest it.
You have, you have to, it's hard to go and still.
Susan, can you sell that five billion dollar campaign?
No. I saw that.
Three hundred pounds of tofu as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to go Friday night.
I don't know what's going to go like that. But he was actually, there's a big guy. He was big. He's six-five, he's strong.
Federal government.
He's a senior.
So billions and trillions.
Poor Hayden. He ain't big enough for that.
It gets rid of that.
I know.
And library too.
Yeah.
He goes on lunchtime watch.
Not what we said.
He had to roll out.
And again, those are just projections.
He never goes live.
We don't even know what's going to happen.
Is this calling?
Well, you don't buy billions.
But not a billion.
They can't save lives. I mean, it's probably a problem. All right, are we ready to start our, all right, we're ready to move forward?
Do we do these during our regular session or do we do these now?
Yeah. So we close there. So what we're going to have to do now is approve of, well, someone will make a motion for the res, for the R and R resolution for the county.
Yeah, so, we closed there, so what we're gonna have to do now is approve, well, someone will make a motion for the resi, for the R and R resolution for the county, and then we'll have one for the fire district number three, that one needs to be added to the agenda.
Okay. So, do we have to make another flag? No, no. So we're doing the R and R resolutions.
Yeah.
For the county.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution of the county of Bourbon, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Actually, I rescind that motion for a second. That's pretty specific, that doesn't give me much options.
No, it doesn't, but you either have to say you're not gonna exceed it, or you're gonna exceed it. If you say you're going to exceed it, if the valuations go down, it allows you to capture whatever you need that you put on your budget document. If you say you're exceeding it and adopt the resolution, you can still levy less, you don't have to exceed it.
Right.
Okay, but it's, it's really specific on this, this, the wording, so, anyway.
And that's the state, that's the.
This drives me crazy.
If you're gonna exceed it, you're gonna exceed it.
I know, but maybe I wanna know.
I didn't know we were voting on it today.
It's all puppy dogs and kitty cats.
It is, it is absolute.
Are we voting on it today?
Yes.
No, 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 no. So, so, we're gonna have a little discussion.
You're not going to hold the budget.
I make a motion to adopt resolution number twelve dash twenty-two, a resolution of the county of Bourbon, Kansas to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
So, the way I understand that is, if you're, we're making a resolution, then we're kinda voting on it, aren't we? I mean.
Not on the final rage.
Just on the resolution, you're not on the budget. Yeah, you're just saying you're gonna exceed it, doesn't mean.
Possibly going to exceed it.
When we finalize the budget, you could say, we're, we're not gonna exceed it, we're gonna keep it flat.
We're gonna less.
If you don't pass the resol, resolution, you don't have that option.
Okay, I second.
Master discussion.
Yeah, any discussion?
So, so I do have discussion.
We have discussion.
I want people to understand.
I didn't just vote to go over the.
There you go.
Yeah, I did not.
We are not voting on the budget, this is not a resolution to adopt a certain budget, this is a resolution that the state is forcing us to make, and my, not forcing us, but, that has come out of this senate bill that is absolute nonsense in my opinion. Okay, now, though.
I have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we all have to sign this?
Let me complicate things.
Do we all have to sign this?
Michael made a very good point.
Puppy dog.
If you didn't exceed it, then our budget was due August twenty-fifth.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, that's what doesn't make sense about this whole thing.
Okay, do we all four sign this, or all?
Yes, all three. I'm not signing anything.
I make a motion to, okay, I make a motion to adopt resolution number thirteen dash twenty-two, a resolution of Bourbon County Fire District number three, Bourbon County, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
All right, second.
Second.
Is on the district fire district.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. I need you to add to the agenda to adopt the budget of fire district number three.
I make a motion to, uh, add to the aden, agenda, the adoption, or the budget adoption of fire district number three, to add that to the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye. Now I make a motion to adopt the budget of fire district number three in Bourbon County.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye. Now there we did adopt a budget, just so everybody's aware, we adopted fire district number three's budget.
Yes.
Revenue neutral rate plus budget.
Yes.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from August twenty-third.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Eric Bailey, Road and Bridge, please.
We're gonna go fast here, so.
Yes, yes.
Stomach's grabbing, I'm just kidding, yeah, no kidding. Um, give you heads up where we're at on asphalting, we did complete the Union Town area last week, and have moved out to two hundred and fifteenth, starting on, uh, we started at Indian, headed south, we made it one point two miles, um, we're gonna make it down to Grand, turn around, come back, finish that, and then we'll look at doing Grand from thirty-nine to thirty-nine, so, that's where we're at there. Mother Nature slowed us down a little bit yesterday, but we'll take it, because we need the rain in a bad way. Um, just so you know, last week, last Friday, we had two big trees go down on a hundred and twenty-fifth, just south of Mapleton, got those cleaned up there Friday night, and, uh, road's back open on that. Bridges, um, the off-system bridge program, we submitted two applications, just to let you know on that, we talked about them last week, that was, uh, bridge number nineteen point two, Q dash zero, a hundred ninety-fifth, between a hundred, a hundred ninety-fifth and two hundred and fifth on Jayhawk, and then the other one was at Sixtieth and Grand, bridge five point O, S point nine, so, um, those are two bridges that are in very much need, and then the bridge five eighteen up here on, uh, two hundred and fifteenth was in the K L B I P program, and I believe that has been submitted as well, so, we will, uh, see how that goes. Um, called me on Colbert last week, we're looking in about a month or so, we should be able to get there, I did talk with the guys about that.
Said the one on, uh, Jayhawk or Hackberry?
Jayhawk.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then we'll get, get his other ones as well, but I, I promise, they are on the list, and there, there's a very, very, very long list that we are going down through, so, uh, but we will get individual taken care of on those. And then last but not least, kind of a celebration thing here, um, did get word last week that our soybean permit has been signed and is in the mail, so, we can now proceed forward with building a pad for composting of soybeans.
This has been a two or three-year process?
I'm very proud of the state, it took twenty-four months.
Yeah.
Get that permit.
Yeah, that was supposed to be turnkey, just get it to us and we'll turn it right around back to you, so, anyhow.
Have you talked to the previous person, you want me to contact them, or?
I'll contact them, we gotta get a, uh, pad built now, we just got permission now to be able to build the pad.
Hopefully, we can get that revenue back, that business back, it's pretty good.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, we'll just have to see what happens.
Absolutely.
So.
Okay.
Anything for me?
I don't have anything.
One quick thing.
Okay.
Um, you mentioned having possibly some extra asphalt on, you know, when you got done with Maple, to go a little bit further east?
Mm-hmm.
Did that happen or no?
It did not happen.
Okay.
And we're, I, just, just so everyone knows, I know, we've talked about fuel going up and what have you, but our asphalt oil, the sixty-four twenty-two that we use has went up seven thousand dollars a load this year, so, from last year, so that just kinda gives you a.
And how many loads do you use a year?
I can't tell you how, it's a bunch.
The reason I ask is.
It's usually one to have load today.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, so.
So, if that were, I mean, I know you didn't have any leftover, but if, if you did theoretically, could, could you have used it a little bit on Yale Road, even if it's just like a, a swath as long as this ru, room here?
And then he's gonna argue with you for.
But it was extra.
Here's why. And Clifton gets everything, and next year, we gotta make that clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Because if he don't, he'll tell me again, and I understand, we have roads that needs addressed, there's three hundred and fifty cars a day, sixty-nine coming down Jayhawk.
Yeah, that's bad.
I mean, we, we gotta chase the traffic a little bit, not that Yale's not important, but we, we got to keep chasing the priorities with traffic within reason.
And how much would it cost, or, you know, would it be a huge inconvenience to put a ca, car counter on Yale Road? I know it's been done before.
Absolutely, I know, we have it out right now, we're monitoring an area where we expect the traffic to go up significantly here in the next month.
But I think people need to realize that, uh, your oil costs have went up three hundred thousand dollars above what they were last year.
Absolutely.
Four hundred thousand, maybe?
Yeah.
Um, now that's, that comes out of a different fund, so that's, it's, uh, the sales tax.
And I know, you can't, obviously repay it, but there are like three or four swaths about as long as this room, um, that if, even the leveling code or whatever you did, I mean, that would have made it a lot better, but.
On, are you talking east of the, uh?
It's, it's in between Mapleton and, yeah, east of the lake.
I.
Do, do you have enough base up there to do that?
That's the problem, up there, technically, and I know they don't wanna hear this, but it, it needs to be said, the road needs to be taken back to gravel, rework the base, and then.
We're potentially throwing good money at bat.
Yes.
If you just patch it, what's there now?
Because what's underneath is not any good.
There's, there's no solid sub, subbase underneath.
And so it's just gonna keep failing.
It was put on X, Y, Z instead of a actual gravel.
So, you need to dress the base, then go back and fix it right.
Right, yeah.
But it could be ten years, possibly.
It could be twenty years.
Yeah.
But, our point is, if you put asphalt on that road just out now, it's gonna fail within months.
We did last year, we did the little patch job or what have you.
It's better than what it was, though.
It is, but part of that we done last year, the subbase is already pumping up through, i- it's just, and, and like I say, I hate to say it, but if we're gonna do it and do it right, my recommendation would be to take it back to, to gravel, rework it, build it back up, get your minimum of six inches of gravel, if not more, as your subbase, and when I say gravel, I mean road rock, and AB3, and build that back up, water it down, build it up in, in layers, and then you will have a good base.
And we did that on Eagle Road, and we haven't been able to go back yet, but we, we have a gravel road, because we had to do exactly what Eric said, the base wasn't there, we had a core sampled, et cetera, and it was nothing to build on, so if you go covering up on some of the areas you're talking about, it's throwing asphalt money away, because of, it won't, you won't have any longevity, it, it, it'll just, it'll fail again until Eric fixes it correctly.
Yeah, and, and I.
It's just a band-aid, unfortunately.
And it, there's several areas, you are correct, that need some attention with that.
And that band-aid's very expensive this year.
Absolutely, absolutely, so.
But, but, I mean, I think people need to understand, you're, you're doing more with less.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you know, you guys are still getting how, a, a lot of miles of asphalt in your districts, but Eric's having to spend more money, so he's cut other places to make that happen.
We appreciate that.
So I think, people need to understand that, you're doing more for less, you're doing exactly what you did last year for the same money, I mean, it's not, you know, anyway, you're not increasing your budget, I think that's, needs to be said and put in the paper and everything else, that Road and Bridge is not incre, they have incre, increased their budget, they're doing more for, they're doing more with less.
And diesel fuel has been very, very, so, hot.
Yeah, thank you.
And everybody, I mean, anyway, I don't wanna get into it.
No, anyhow.
You complain about roads, but the fact matter is, I drive, I drive a problem, I drive more than most people.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, Eric, thank you.
Okay. Yep.
Uh, Justin Meeks. Okay. Uh, Ms. Susan Vanacro, CFO, got nothing. Mr. Shane Walker, nothing.
Public comment.
You got, it couldn't be much public comment left.
I got a whole part two. I got a whole part two.
Hooray.
You can get to finish.
We're ready.
Public comment.
You gonna turn me off again? Power of the switch, I guess.
So I'm going to quote Mr. Beth again from this factual newspaper. "People need to show up," he said. He encouraged people to provide commissioners with input regarding the budget, he said there's a limited number of people, I'm paraphrasing what he said, but he read it just a few minutes ago, so he knows I'm not telling stories. Beth talked about the limited number of people who attended the meeting or were watching the live stream online. Okay, please consider how frustrating it is when fifty percent of the content of a meeting is coming where we can't hear you. It's either made at the back door here, or comments made from the audience, so we need microphones up there, another podium over there, and then just like the agenda this evening, it said be here at nine in the morning, but yet, we changed it to six, so which is it, six, nine, we get confused, nobody shows up.
Propose a budget increase to put cameras, no.
No cameras, just, we need microphones to be heard, or everybody needs to speak from a microphone.
You're, you're, you're talking about one meeting, I mean, I've been here for two years now, almost, and.
Careful, just be careful.
This is the most people that's been here, this is like the top, I mean, in the top five of the number of people that's been here in two years, so, when I say people need to show up, I'll stand by that, I'll say it again, I would love for people to show up, I would love for people to call me or come by and talk to me, but they don't.
I would.
I mean, that's not my fault.
But they're frustrated because they can't be involved when they only hear half the conversation, or they're given half the information. Like I said earlier, I knocked at the door there, at the window, is there anything for tonight's meeting? No, just the agenda, which says be here at nine, be here at six, frustrating. Then I arrive here and I get a stack of paper like that that I have to digest. Susan said that was available on the meeting of the nineteenth, but of course, that was not on the YouTube, because we didn't hear half of that meeting, or we didn't see, I can't remember which one it was.
You can hear all of them.
You could hear it all, but you couldn't see, we saw you standing right there. Okay.
I watched it all on YouTube after, it just took a minute to get up.
No, it was not on YouTube, the entire thing was, I'll, I'll take your.
I quoted them.
I'll bet you a beer, but one of those meetings was, he was froze, standing right there the entire time.
Right, but the sound's all there.
Sound's all there.
So, if you're, if you can hear, you heard.
If you know who's talking, everybody knows my voice, but we, Clifton wasn't even in the room when the video went out, he had a flat tire that day, and then all of us.
I mean, I was here five minutes after.
I know, but we didn't know that, the, the video was frozen.
Well.
But you had the opportunity to be here.
You can come and ask.
I have the opportunity to be here, but does everybody have the opportunity to be here?
The Kansas Open Meetings Act law does not, now that we're back, when COVID.
Come over here, don't stop, talk from that door.
I think we're.
It's semantics, but the law has, now that we're not in COVID anymore, the Kansas Open Meeting Act does not need to have it videoed or done publicly, it's just a service at this point, now that we're open meetings and we're not in COVID lockdown, when the meetings are open, you don't have to record it, you don't have to audio it, you don't have to do any of that stuff, so this right now is just a service to the taxpayers.
And it's a good, we, it's good that we do, but.
Sure, I like to, I like that they're recorded, because they can be used for notes or, you know, anything else down the road, but it doesn't have to be perfect, because the Kansas Open Meetings Act, you have an open meeting to the public and they can show up.
Yeah, I'd like to also add that I would like to have a meeting like we had in the Buffalo Room several months ago, that nobody showed up, I like to do that every quarter, invite the public, but people need to come to meetings, we wanna hear from them, they don't show up. Anyway, the Buffalo Room, the River, the River Room.
River Room, I'm sorry.
Anyway, the Buffalo Room, the River Room, River Room, I'm sorry.
Well, I have a position on that, too.
So, to speak to the YouTube issue, we don't own YouTube, we don't control YouTube, YouTube's a technology that we have no access to, other than to free service, if you want me to record these meetings and broadcast them to where they work one-hundred percent all the time, it's sixty, seventy thousand dollars, we're not gonna do that, we're not gonna raise taxes to do that, to make somebody...
I think you should have asked the public what they want, do you want to make them come to this meeting, or do you want to make them be able to hear?
Yeah, I don't understand the non-hearing thing, if they're not at the microphone, I have trouble, I don't have a problem, and I can do it on my phone.
But Michael, you shouldn't address from there, nobody should address.
Nobody should address from there or there, because you cannot hear it in this microphone.
Okay, okay. Anything else, Mike?
Yes.
As I said, we have a problem finding ballot questions around here, so I brought the ballot. I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
And I was not here. Let me get back up here.
I was out here April seventh of two thousand and fifteen, but I can read, it says Shaw Bourbon County, Kansas, be authorized to impose, one, a four-point-four percent retailer's sales tax, the sales tax, for the purpose of paying all costs necessary to construct, furnish, and operate a new jail facility, and related improvements to the county, including renovations to the existing courthouse, and other, was that those cued coughs, or what?
Allergies?
Yeah, okay.
My fault.
Improvements in the county, including renovations to the existing courthouse and other county buildings, collectively, the jail improvements, with collection of such sales tax to commence on October first, two thousand and fifteen, or as soon thereafter as legally permissible, which I think would be January one, was when it would be legally permissible, and to sunset and expire upon the payment of all costs incurred in the constructing such jail improvements, including the retirement of any bonds issued, and payment from such sales tax, and to issue sales tax, general obligation bonds, the bonds, in an amount not to exceed six million eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, to finance the costs of such jail improvements, provided that the county receive prior to such an issuance, a comprehensive feasibility study that indicates that the revenues received from such sales tax will be sufficient to retire such bonds, without the necessity of levying any ad valorem tax, any, all pursuant to KSA twelve-dash-one-eighty-seven, which I've spoken here with you about, KSA twelve-one-eighty-seven, and it's a mess, it's a statute that's very difficult to understand, you have to kinda dissect it, and as amended, including any action by the Kansas, two thousand and fifteen Kansas Legislature, now, let me go get my one-eighty-seven.
Oh, sorry, Justin has it, Justin?
Yeah, you have the other page, too?
So codified in the Kansas State Statutes, one-eighty-seven, it's multiple pages, has multiple paragraphs, has multiple sub-paragraphs, but in twelve-one-eighty-seven-G, the result of the election held on April the seventh, two thousand and fifteen, on the question submitted by the Board of County Commissioners of Bourbon County for the purpose of increasing its sales tax by point oh-four percent, is hereby declared valid, so pass the ballot. Codified in this ballot question, one-eighty-seven refers to twelve-one-eighty-nine.
Only in that paragraph, that does not include Bourbon County.
I would disagree with you, if you read down to the subsections.
Well, so, I mean, what are you trying to say?
What I'm telling you is, my, my...
Go ahead.
Position is, the jail tax sunsets in two years.
It says that on the act, it doesn't say this on the ballot.
Yeah, the ballot didn't say that.
No, but it's codified in Kansas...
Mr. Hoyt and I have had a discussion concerning another sales tax issue, and he made a comment about the not being able to find the election ballots, I mean, I don't think the counties ever had that issue before, we provided those to him, I think...
No, you said you passed it to Bob Farmer, he has not gotten back to it.
I'm saying this, this, I'm not talking about the other ones, I'm talking about these here, the one that he's mentioning now, Mr. Hoyt and I have had pretty lively discussions concerning this issue, it is statutory, I think there's an interpretation that is occurring with the statutes that could be disputed, so everyone has their opinion, it's, Mr. Hoyt's right, the one-eighty-seven is very convoluted and it's all over the place, but it specifically says Bourbon County, so obviously, if the sales tax revenues went up, the commission actually could probably pay the jail off sooner, but we're still years away from that occurring, so hopefully, you know, Mr. Hoyt and I can go and have this argument again and have those discussions, I can write legal opinions if we want, we can go back and forth.
Okay, okay, then I'll just finish on this point, and Susan, you're gonna have to help me with the numbers, because I don't remember what you just told me, but we've paid on this now eight years, and the final balance due today is over six million dollars.
The bond, my recollection from the bond, it actually goes out to two thousand and thirty-five is what the...
The debt service today is over six million dollars.
The, so I need to break it down for people to understand.
Break it down, yeah, because I don't know, I don't understand how you got...
We refinanced the bond, so if we're talking just about bonds, there's five-point-two million on the refunding part of it, and then five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars on a couple certificates that it didn't make sense to refinance, and so those two together is five-point-seven million, now, what you have to understand about the debt service and how it's structured, is you pay interest upfront, and you pay your principal at the end, and it continues to get higher each year, normally, debt service, you'll pay higher at the beginning, and it'll get lower, but, or it stays relatively the same, but this is structured so that we're paying more as the years go on, because I think the idea is that our sales tax revenues will go up, now, sometime after, I wasn't here during that time, they must have determined that the sales tax was going to generate enough money to buy additional jail pod and equipment, this is not a bond, this is a lease purchase, and there's still one-point-five million owed on that, so when he says it exceeds the six million, the bonds are not exceeding that, the bonds have been paid down, but you still have total debt service in excess of the six million, because I think there were some pods and stuff added after the fact, so that's all I know, that's all I can explain, I can just tell you what the debt service is.
So my understanding was, I mean, so there's six, five and six something?
Seven, almost eight million.
Almost eight million total.
Almost eight million total.
And you sure about that?
Well, yeah, because...
Five-point-two million, plus...
Yeah, but yeah, originally issued bonds at six-point-eight million, bonds, and then you came in and issued one-point-seven million in jail pod and equipment through a lease purchase.
That's not fourteen, that's not fourteen million, or whatever you said, that...
I didn't say, who said fourteen million?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, that's what I thought I heard you just say.
Six million plus one-point-seven million.
I'm speaking as clearly as I can.
How much?
Eight-hundred and twenty.
Plus eight-hundred and thousand, nine million three, so, so, yeah, that means, so my, my recollection is about ten million dollars, total.
Oh, you wanna say ten million dollars?
Well, it's nine-point-three is what I came up with, but I, I'm telling you my recollection, Michael, not what I came up with, when I was here and voted on it, was around ten million dollars, and we owe...
About eight million.
No, we don't.
Well, five-point-two, five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, and one-point-seven-five.
Okay, let's add it up, no, let's get the numbers right, five-point what?
Five-point-two.
Two-hundred thousand.
No, five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand.
Well, you just said five-point-two.
Five-point-two million, five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, and then one-point-seven-five million.
Seven million.
Seven, eight million. Seven-three billion, okay, the bottom line to this conversation, whether we agree whether the sunset date should be twenty-twenty-five or twenty-thirty-five, is we should be very careful with that money, how we're spending it, and not use it outside of the jail, it was targeted to the jail fund, not...
It's mostly being spent on public safety.
How can it be spent on public safety, you mean salaries?
It's being, it's helping with all of their equipment expenses, so when they're buying cars and things like that, and paying down the debt.
The ballot card says operate a jail.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's pretty wide open, and if you've got, you've only retired how much of the debt in eight years?
Okay, first off, we've only been here for two years, and in my...
We have to talk big picture here.
I'm understanding that, but you're saying you, and I don't, I mean...
No, you, you doesn't mean you personally.
But, the fact of the matter is, is that...
I think it could be prefaced more as, are we, are we making efforts to try and pay down the debt quicker as sales tax increases?
And apparently not, over the last eight years.
Apparently not.
Now, with that said, I can tell you that when I got here, they had spent seventy-thousand dollars on the sidewalk or something at this building, which made no sense to me, but whatever, I wasn't here.
Was that the front steps or over here?
It was this, over here, I wasn't here, don't know anything about that.
No, you were almost here, because I was here.
It was, I was not here, they were working on it when I came here.
Okay, I was almost here.
But since then, it's all been spent on the jail, so as far as I know.
Well, I understand that your proposal is to do your other sidewalk over here with jail money.
It's not jail money, it says operations of county...
The county courthouse, I'm just telling you, you need to be careful.
It says county buildings.
And I would like to see the feasibility study, wherever that is.
Wouldn't you rather, my question would be, wouldn't you rather use sales tax dollars that is being generated from people outside of our community, rather than having to increase property taxes?
Which is already covered in the ballot question, that ad valorem taxes will not be increased.
No, 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 I'm talking about...
I know what you're talking about, it says ad valorem tax will not be increased.
Let me finish my statement, you're cutting me off, when there are improvements that need to be done to county buildings, wouldn't you prefer that people from the outside help pay for those improvements through sales tax, rather than it being through ad valorem tax, because the improvements to this building could be taxed to the people, we're not talking about jail operations at this point, we have an opportunity to not increase people's taxes and still maintain this facility, because we have some extra sales tax coming in, so it's just, it's a philosophical conversation for the commissioners.
Finished?
Mm-hmm.
So what you're really asking me is, do I want to cut off my right leg or my left leg, which do I prefer?
We, we have to fix this sidewalk, have you seen it?
I walk on it and fall over it every day.
And the ballot, the ballot clearly says we can.
I have not seen the feasibility study, and it does not say that you can, it does say county courthouse facilities, that's all it says, but it also says it should be targeted to the jail, so I think we should be real quiet.
I would say seventy-five, eighty percent of it is targeted to the jail.
But seventy-five and eighty percent, again, do I already chop off half of this leg and all of this leg?
Wouldn't last year be a hundred percent went to the jail?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Yeah, I'd say last year, a hundred percent went to the jail.
That must have been because you were here.
And sir, it says comprehensive feasibility study that indicates the revenues received from such sales tax will be sufficient to retire such bonds without the necessity of levying any ad valorem taxation, so that means, the way I read it is, it doesn't forbid the county from levying ad valorem tax to pay for it, it just, the feasibility study would indicate that they wouldn't have to.
But that feasibility study must also indicate when it's supposed to sunset, because the statute says ten years.
Yeah, and this is where the philosophical discussion I've had with Mr. Hoyt, there's two different types of sales tax and how they're on the ballot, and so in this case, this doesn't have the sunset, this is an open sales tax until the bond's actually paid off, there, I do agree with Mr. Hoyt on some levels, there are sales taxes that do sunset after ten years, but the language in the ballot question is different, so, and that's the philosophical discussion that Mr. Hoyt and I had, and that was a good banter, and some good research was done a couple of years ago with that, so, in this case, the study was done, which was interesting, on what the sales tax revenues look like in two thousand and thirty-four, and would there be enough sales tax revenue to actually keep paying the bond payments, because if you, you know, don't pay them, you're in trouble, so that study was done pre, that's the study you're talking about, the feasibility study.
It was in the ballot question.
Yeah, and so that's part of that, and so the sales tax revenues were always projected to go up, I've always been nervous when I was involved in the budget process of if sales tax revenues actually went down, and did you have enough money in reserves to actually make the bond payment, and so, to me, I always want to have those reserves in case something does happen catastrophic, and the sales tax revenues crash, that you actually have money to make the payments, and so...
I approve that statement.
Yeah, and so that's why you want to have some money in reserves, to make sure, and it should be more than one year's payment, in my opinion, that's my opinion.
Do we have those reserves, more than one year's payment?
Anything else, Mike? Anyone else from public comment?
She is gonna come in on.
Okay, close the public comment, commission comment. I don't have anything. Clifton?
No, I don't think so.
If I say something to the public, does, can the public respond, or if I say something, I get the last word and we get out of here?
Only if you ask.
Okay.
I have to ask the public to respond.
Then my only comment would be, I mean, if your argument is that we need to pay our debt off quicker and our, you know, service our debt better, then I'd agree with that, but, I mean, that's quick and easy discussion, yeah.
Well, last year, we, sorry, were you...
Nope, I'm done.
Last year, we refinanced the debt, maybe, Jim, were you here? We did that before.
Before.
Me and Lynn did, I mean, I, me and Lynn did that, and, and it's very favorable rates, we saved it up to, I can't remember the exact number, it was fifty-seven thousand on one, and it was close to a hundred-six figures, wasn't it, so we were able to save a hundred thousand dollars a year, and it potentially, and I don't remember this, but it potentially could have extended the bonds at that point, I don't, I don't remember.
No, it did not.
I don't think it did, but I understand that, but the years could have changed, on bonds, the years can change drastically, but, you know, we've tried, I mean...
Okay, anything else?
I'm good.
Air motion to adjourn?
Second.
No, he's asking for one.
Oh, I'm motioning, yeah.
Okay, I'll second, no, it's motion.
End discussion, all favor I.
Aye.
Going home, feeding my dogs.
Sorry, Ashley, I thought it was gonna be short.
You don't go hard.
Here's your question. Thank you.
So, would you be around here?